Ten AM, Wednesday, May the 7th. Called the Monongahia County Commission meeting to order. I ask that you please stand for a moment of silent meditation and remain standing for the pledge.
Thank you. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just before we start our agenda, I would just like to welcome everyone here today. Particularly pleased to see Dr. Givano and as well as members of the Board of Education and see teachers in our school system and certainly our students. So before we get into our agenda, I wanted to make sure that you do feel welcome. We're glad that you're here and I think we may have some parents here as well. So it's good to have everyone here. Diane?
Okay. This was the first year for our recognition of County Government Month and we decided to, in conjunction with the National Association of Counties and the County Commissioners Association, sponsored an eighth grade essay contest. We were fortunate to receive forty-five essays and they were very hard to judge. These kids definitely did their homework and to see what the county commissioners actually did for them. So with that said, we have a first, second, and third place winners. They have not been announced. They're here today, but they don't know who won just yet. I'd like to announce that third place winner is Madeline Wright. Okay? She is receiving a check for fifty dollars. That's for you. And if you would please read, stand here in front and read your essay to everyone. And also I'd like you to recognize anyone that's here with you, your parents, your teachers.
Well, my principal, Mrs. Nance, is here and so are my teachers, Mrs. Stoller and Mrs. Groves. And my mom is also here. How does the county commission make life better? In counties like Monongahia County and communities like Morgantown, there are many things citizens take for granted. Parks, pools, and libraries are just a few. But how do we get these? The process involves collecting finances, construction crews, and public support. But if you go back far enough, most of these parks and other government-owned properties originated with the county commission. The county commission does much for this county and not just building libraries. They also prepare the county budget, serve judges over all elections, and maintain county properties. Although some of these duties don't directly affect me, they make life better for me in one way or another. One of the county commission's duties is to prepare a budget for the county offices. They disperse the money in different offices based on several factors, including requested amount and recommended amount. Although I myself do not serve in one of these offices and do not receive the money directly, the office uses the money in ways that affect me and make my life better. For example, some of the money is given to the volunteer fire departments in Monongahia County and health services so that in case of an emergency, I don't have to worry as much as I would without the services. Another of the county commission's main duties is to oversee the proper conduction of the elections held in Monongahia County. They service judges over the elections and verify results by canvassing. They also fill out records if a request is made. I may not be old enough yet to vote, but I will be able to in less than four years. So although it may not directly affect me, knowing that each vote cast is carefully counted and recorded is reassuring for when I am old enough to vote. Finally, one thing that the county commission does that affects me directly is to build public parks and maintain government properties. My family enjoys going to the public parks around Morgantown and also loves to go swimming in the public pools such as Marlet and Crabs. So the new water complex, the Cheat Lake, is being considered would create hours of fun for all families. Also, the well-maintained parks are enjoyable and having clean parks to visit has been a great part of my childhood. Because the county commission creates and maintains these parks, there are safe, well-maintained places for families and children to visit and play at. These parks have most certainly made my life better. To conclude, there are many ways that the county commission helps to make the lives of this county's citizens better, even when they don't notice. They do many things, including preparing budget, overseeing elections, and developing and maintaining county properties. They make my life better in many ways and I'm truly grateful for all the work they put in to helping this county and citizens and me.
Madeline, this is your certificate and you are making your way into the championship.
You're gonna sit here. Welcome.
Thanks to have you on the board. We want your true unabated truth. Just tell it the way it is.
You may let her look at the agenda. Sure. I'm gonna let her vote.
Okay. Just Madeline is a delightful student, excellent writer, both creatively and factually. I have just enjoyed having her as a student this year and have enjoyed seeing her budding, writing throughout. And I'm anxious for her in four years to be a voter. I think she will make some very wise decisions. So congratulations.
We have a certificate. Here's your certificate. This is fifty dollars for classroom supplies, for paint, and also...
What she said. Thank you, Commissioner Bloom, for coming to speak to my class. I think it really motivated some of our students to participate in this. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have a certificate and fifty dollars also for the class.
Show me one.
Okay. Our second place winner is Daniel Neely.
My English teacher, Ms. Frish, is with me and my mom and dad. Monongahia County Commission immensely helps my community and provides many activities for us. The county commission prohibits smoking in county-owned and operated properties. It also assures that money is given to the 911 center so that it can properly function. The commission runs twelve different volunteer fire departments in my county. Camp Muffley was created and is maintained by the commission. There are thousands of ways that the county commission effectively helps my community. Monongahia County's 911 center has twenty-five professional emergency dispatchers who handle hundreds of calls per day. They make sure that the PR person reporting has a serious emergency and they do what they can to fix the issue. Our lives would be chaotic and fully distressed without the crisis center. Monongahia County would be in peril because no one would have the ability to handle daily dangers. If the county commission did not maintain the 911 center, our entire county would be in complete mayhem. The county commission also helps the twelve volunteer fire departments in my county remain active. The volunteer fire departments teach families how to protect people and their homes against fires. It also inserts fire hydrants conveniently around the county for a supply of water that they use to extinguish fires. When their warnings fail, the fire department saves people's lives from burning buildings in Dallas fires. Many establishments have been rescued before complete demolition by the twelve different fire departments. Monongahia County Commission saves people's lives every day indirectly. Monongahia County Commission has the responsibility of preventing smoking in county-owned and operated properties. It stops non-smokers' lungs from being intoxicated with nicotine. Secondhand smoking is just as hazardous as firsthand smoking. The harmful chemicals in cigarettes still infect the lungs of people around them. Cancer is a severe side effect of first, second, and thirdhand smoking. Monongahia County would be jeopardizing the safety of people if this responsibility was neglected. Last but not least, the county commission created 4-H Camp Muffley that I attend in the summer. Camp Muffley is used for weddings, receptions, camps, and recreational events. I go to Camp Muffley for a 4-H camp that helps me learn valuable life skills. This previous summer, I learned how to ice cakes, watch my nutrition, and create my own pillows. Camp Muffley gives children and teens the opportunity to develop social and life skills. Monongahia County Commission supports my community and offers many recreational activities. It maintains the 911 center and assures that it will remain in business. The commission indirectly saves lives by assisting the twelve different fire departments stay active. Also, it prevents people from smoking on county-owned and operated properties. The county commission created and maintains Camp Muffley that is used for many purposes. Without the commission, our county would be deprived of important opportunities and be in a hazardous situation.
You can shake your feet up here. This is your certificate and your check for a hundred dollars. Ms. Frish, this is our classroom certificate. You have a check for a hundred dollars.
Commissioner? Welcome, Commissioner. I need to look at all the money and see what was done.
Daniel, she's a perfect student. Academically, she's very strong in all language arts areas. I can't say anything about math, but I'm sure she's gonna get that. She works hard, she's very focused, and it's a pleasure to be her teacher. So, well done.
And our first place winner, Ina S. Reese.
You gotta remember who this commissioner is.
I have my English teacher, Mr. Grantmar, and my parents. How does my county commission make life better for me? The Monongahia County Commission helps my county in many ways. They are a group of elected officials that administer the county government. Monongahia County Commission meets every Wednesday at ten o'clock AM. Some members include the President, Bill Bartolo, and Commissioners Eldon A. Callen and Tom Bloom. The commission has a number of jobs that benefit the community. One is setting the tax rates, which determines personal and business property taxes. They own and maintain county properties such as the county courthouse and county parks and property. They sit as a board of review in February each year to hear appeals on property values. Even though they do not own or repair any roads, they can authorize the closing of a street that is unused. This is done by a petition. I think that closing these unused roads makes them safer for everyone. The commission appoints members of specific county boards such as the Board of Health, the Building Commission, the Development Authority, and the Historic Landmarks Commission. They prepare ordinances for the safety of the people in the county through the Abandoned and Dilapidated Property Enforcement Agency, the Local Emergency Planning Commission, and the Hazardous Incident Response Team. One of the most important county commission boards is the MECCA Policy Board, which deals directly with the 911 call center. These things help me because it keeps my county safer. Another important county commission board is the Transit Authority. This commission takes care of all the buses serving citizens in Monongahia County. Public service districts help to keep the water clean. This is important because if the county does not have clean water, it could result in many people getting sick. Another commission that is important in keeping my county clean is the Solid Waste Authority. The county commission also answers frequent questions anyone has about the county, such as where can I pick up an income tax form or what if I have received a parking ticket? If you visit the Monongahia County Commission website, you can see the county ordinances and budget. You can also share your ideas and even contact them. I have learned a lot through my research of the Monongahia County Commission and what goes on behind the scenes to keep Monongahia County running smoothly. I now know what goes on in my county and I think this knowledge will help me later in life.
Your certificate and your check for a hundred and fifty dollars. Spend it wisely.
Just put it right over this one.
All right.
I'll get out of here while you go. That's a good idea.
And Linda Grantmar?
Hi. Thank you for having us here today. I have the privilege of being Elise's teacher for English for three years. She not only has grown really tremendously as a person but as a student, from someone who was a little bit shy in the beginning to someone who has really embraced everything there is about school, not just language arts. She's an incredible writer, she's gifted, she has just a great ability to embrace any project that she tackles and put one-hundred-plus percent into everything that she does. So she's a fantastic student.
Great. Thank you. I have a certificate for you and a hundred and fifty dollars for your class.
Diane?
Thank you.
I am recognized as a member of the 217.
Okay. Did you want to say anything today?
Never pass a chance. No, I certainly want to thank the commission. We certainly appreciate your initiative to be able to do this and involve the schools. I think it really makes a difference for our students to be able to understand government and how it works. So thank you very much. We appreciate the hospitality as well and you all kind of opened this up to our students. I certainly acknowledge our teachers and those of us and the parents who took the initiative to be able to do this because these are our future leaders. And I want, not only do I want you to vote, but I also want you to run for an office when you become a vate so that you can be the leaders in the community that set that direction. So, but thank you, commissioners. We appreciate it.
And the board members, would you like...
Mr. Harvey. Oh, yeah. Pass up an opportunity to congratulate youngsters and our excellent teachers who teach them. I salute them and look forward to them running for your job someday. How nice, how nice of you to have these kids here. They're very precious to us and I'm sure they're precious to you as well. And so we're here now to celebrate the kids and I hope they have a good day, but I hope they don't get a snakebite or something. Thank you so much.
Yeah, if we may give the parents an opportunity if they have any comment, Diane. Give the parents an opportunity if they have any comments that they want to make.
Anyone wants to speak now and say how proud they are of their kids? Welcome. No one?
Yeah.
Come on, Dad, you're smiling.
I just wanted to say that, you know, I am very proud of Elise. She's a tremendous daughter and just she does excel in whatever she does. She's been through some times, tough times, and she's got a lot of good times ahead of her. And just, I'm glad you're my daughter. I love you.
I just want to let Madam President know one thing. If anyone gets out of order, there's a gavel there. If there's security standing out there, you can remove from the meeting, okay?
Okay. Next issue, we're going to have pizza for lunch and we need to kind of get a head count of how many are going to be here, who would like to join us.
We're gonna break at eleven o'clock.
Yes, eleven o'clock so we can...
For lunch. And you're all welcome to stay and join in with us. You're guaranteed to get the pizza.
How many of you think you might stay? Like to have all...
Raise your hand.
Just raise your hand. That's an idea.
I'm just trying to get a count.
We're getting as many as possible.
You're welcome to stay.
Please stay if you can. It'll be nice to stay if you can.
Are you gonna have sausage? You're gonna have...
Pepperoni?
I ordered two.
Vegetarian. No. I nixed the answer.
Everybody say it. I didn't see no hands.
Probably figure on twenty.
Twenty, yeah.
Twenty, twenty-five? Twenty, twenty-five.
Yeah. Now, what, you see, who usually goes first? Just call them Diane to continue our agenda. If you're gonna say Diane.
Diane? Okay, I'm ready. I gave each of you a sheet so you can follow along. I normally don't do that, but you girls will see what we do.
She's gonna read this right now.
First thing, there are thirty-seven exonerations for eighteen thousand one hundred...
I apologize. Ms. Ramini was out here and tells the principal of one of the schools, so...
Oh, that would be nice. They were here.
At least introducing, while he was out here, there was no seat, so... Anything you want to make or looking disappointed in yourself and she's already ready.
I'm sorry, since Judge Tucker's court, while I was, I couldn't get down there in time. We're just real proud of her, of course. She's a great young lady and we will miss her when she moves off to high school, but we expect great things from her. She's a fine, outstanding young lady and represents our school in a very fine fashion. We appreciate her and her parents, of course, and you folks for giving her the opportunity to compete in the contest. So thank you very much. Thank you.
We're happy to say that we do have three schools represented. So that was good that we spread it around. Okay, are we gonna move on? Ready? Okay. These are items that the commissioners approve every week. First is exonerations and these are corrections from tax tickets that were, there was a clerical error. So this week we have thirty-seven listings for eighteen thousand one hundred ninety-seven dollars and ninety cents. That amount is being refunded to various taxpayers for overpayment of their taxes. It's for tax years 2012 and 2013. Fiduciary matters, we have orders as of May 7, 2014. Fiduciary matters are when someone dies and their will has to be what they call probated and the heirs get what they're entitled to. Those are the orders. Those go through the county clerk's office, so we approve those every week. Also, there's an objection to an estate and that is an issue that the commissioners are going to be discussing and approve as a separate matter. We don't have many minutes today, but usually Janet records the minutes and prepares them on paper. They're in books downstairs for history. They're approved every week by the commissioners so that ten years from now, you can go back, you can look up this meeting and read what happened here today. Next are the vouchers. Now vouchers are payments of bills that come in. There's different funds in the county, so bills are paid from whichever account the money is in for them. General County Fund makes up the majority of the budget. And this week we have, in General County Fund, we're spending two-hundred-twenty-three-thousand forty-five dollars and two cents on bills. General County Fund, we use a purchasing card. With that purchasing card, which is like a credit card, we have seven thousand eight hundred dollars and ninety-three cents. For the coal severance fund, which is a fund that we get in from the state for coal that's produced here in the county, there are bills being paid out of that fund for thirty-six thousand seven hundred eighty-eight dollars and fifteen cents. Camp Muffley, there's a separate fund that runs the camp. We put money into it if we need to or the receipts that they earn out there go into this fund for exclusive use at the park. For Camp Muffley, we have expenses of three thousand three hundred twenty-one dollars and five cents. Same way with the Mason Dixon Park, there's a separate fund to operate that camp, that park. We have two-hundred-seventy-seven dollars and sixty-four cents being spent from there. The assessor has a special assessor's valuation fund and this is two percent of the general county budget. And expenses related to valuation of property are spent from that account, forty-two thousand eight hundred eighty-seven dollars. Magistrate Court Fund is expenses to operate magistrate court, thirty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents. So Home Confinement Fund for people who are kept out of jail, they are in home confinement, they have a bracelet they have to be accounted for instead of going to jail. That fund, we've spent nine thousand two hundred twenty-one dollars and ninety-six cents. There's a 911 cash fund. This is expenses to operate the 911 center. It's one thousand five hundred fourteen dollars and seventy-seven cents for a total of three hundred twenty-four thousand eight hundred ninety-one dollars and fifty-one cents. So that's the amount of money that's been spent in the last two weeks to operate the county. We also have one budget revision. This is moving five thousand dollars from one account to another to cover an additional appropriation that the commission decided to give for the Fourth of July celebrations. And then the commissioners approve these.
Now, we're gonna say with the exception of the estate of Deborah Myers. Can you say that?
The what?
Say, with the exception of the objection on the final settlement in the estate of Deborah Myers. Can you say that?
With the exception of...
The objection.
The objection of final settlement of Deborah Myers.
I move for approval.
For what?
Say, I move for approval.
I move for approval.
I second.
You're, as Diane, what you would say is you have a motion for approval.
We haven't got there yet.
Okay, that'll be a separate matter.
We said with the exception of...
Yeah, we haven't got there yet.
We're just approving the rest of it. Okay. Well, let's do it in part then. Okay. Repeat, you can repeat after me. You have a motion?
I have a motion.
In a second.
In a second.
For approval.
For approval.
All in favor, sign the final saying aye.
All in favor.
Sign the final saying aye.
Opposed.
Motion carried.
Motion carried.
Okay, now do you want to take up the objection to the estate?
Yes. Is the individual here?
Yes, right there.
Yes.
You're Mr. Patton?
No.
No? Oh, you're Mr. Patton. Oh, you're Mr. Patton. And who are you, sir?
I'm Jay Palata, representing Bond Insurance.
Okay, would you give your, please give your address so that it'll be a matter of record.
My address is 1005 North Point Plaza, Morgantown.
Okay, and Mr. Patton, would you give your address, please?
My address is 158 Tower Hill Road, Venetia, Pennsylvania, 15367.
You want to give Mr. Palata an opportunity to speak? You filed the objection?
Yes.
And what you would say is, I'm ready for it. We're ready to listen to your...
We're ready to listen to your objection.
Okay, great. My objection is the bond that we provided in the matter for this probate has not been satisfied by Mr. Patton. Okay? So until we get satisfied, you know, until we get satisfied for the bond, the premium for the bond, you know, I don't feel that it should be, that the probate should be settled. I don't think you should approve final settlement.
Ask Mr. Patton again.
Do you have a comment?
Yes, I prepared a statement and made copies for everyone. Shall I and may I? There are three.
That's all right. We're sure.
And I could read it, but I don't want to insult anyone's intelligence.
Go ahead and read.
Go ahead. Glasses on. Attending the closing of the estate of Deborah Lynn Myers, per my submission of final accounting affidavit and objection to the closing submitted by Jay Palata of Bond Insurance. Submitted by Scott Patton, the estate administrator. Ms. Myers died intestate. She had no will and the family asked me, because I settled my mom's estate, they had, Ms. Myers had very little in the way of assets. They asked me if I would do this for them and as a favor to the family, I accepted this assignment. Summary, Mr. Palata's objected to the closing of the estate due to the fact that Bond Insurance is, that Bond Insurance is owed three hundred and ten dollars in premium due of the estate's bond. In view of the fact that the estate has no assets from which to pay Bond Insurance, it is Mr. Palata's assertion that I, as the estate's administrator, am personally responsible for this bond premium. My position on this matter, on January 7, 2013, upon receipt of an invoice from Bond Insurance, I phoned their Kingwood office and spoke to Rhonda Payhel. I explained to Ms. Payhel that the estate had no assets with which to pay this bill and asked if the bond be canceled. There were no assets to protect. She said that the bond cannot be canceled prior to the estate's closing, but that she would see if there was any way to suspend monthly invoicing, if for no other reason than to save the monthly cost of invoicing. On February 9, 2013, I received a subsequent monthly bill from Bond Insurance. I again called the Kingwood office and suggested again that there were no assets and inquired again if there was any way to suspend the bond. I was told again that the bond could not be suspended. It would seem to me that a representative of Bond Insurance should have called me then to discuss the debt and how it should be or would be handled in a case in which the estate has no assets with which to pay. I never had any further contact from Bond Insurance other than monthly invoices until after I had submitted the final filing, disburse receipts and disbursements affidavit and asked would the estate be closed. On April 27, 2014, I received a telephone call from Mr. Palata asking when this would be paid. This was the first time I had ever spoken to Mr. Palata directly regarding this matter. During that phone call, Mr. Palata stated that if the estate has insufficient assets to pay the bond premium, it is then the estate administrator's responsibility to pay this premium out of pocket. It is my opinion that the estate should be closed. Points of reasoning, the estate has no assets with which to pay this premium. Two, Bond Insurance was notified in January of 2013, again in February of 2013, that there were no assets with which to pay this premium. The matter should have been brought forth for discussion and resolution... The matter should have been brought forth for discussion and resolution long before this, if it was going to block the estate's closing. Three, it should be noted that Bond Insurance is one of eight creditors of the estate, myself included. All were contacted by me personally to explain that Ms. Myers had passed away and that her estate had insufficient assets to pay these obligations. Four, if I am personally responsible for this debt, that is a separate matter between Bond Insurance and myself, and thus has no bearing on the estate being closed. I therefore move that the estate of Deborah Lynn Myers be closed. In the matter of Bond Insurance versus Scott Patton, we resolve separately. Final note, frankly, I simply do not know if, as estate administrator, I am responsible by law to pay this premium. But if I am, I will certainly pay Bond Insurance the $310 current premium due on the estate's bond. I have never, in my life, not paid a bill for which I am responsible, and I've often helped others by paying bills for which they were responsible to help in times of need. I've attached also an excerpt of my transcript. Every day as I did work on behalf of the estate, I made a short summary of the date, what work was done, and I pulled out the pages where I contacted Bond Insurance. So there is a record, and not a certified, notarized record, of my conversations with Bond Insurance agency in January and February of 2013. So I respectfully request that the estate of Deborah Lynn Myers deceased be put to rest, be closed.
Ask Mr. Palata if he had any comment. My final comment.
Do you have a final comment?
Yes, thank you. I understand Mr. Patton's dilemma, and I mean, I empathize with him, but our obligation, Bond Insurance's obligation is to the court. We have to continue providing the bond as long as the estate is open. So we have no way to cancel, we have no way to cancel a bond, because the obligation's to the court. You can't, someone can't, just can't call and say, "Well, there's no money. Cancel this bond." You can't do that. So that's why he was told that the bond could not be canceled, because it can't be, and Bond Insurance pays the bond, because, like I said, our obligation is to this court. So we have to pay the bond for the estate until we can receive payment, until the estate's closed.
Ask any commissioner if they have questions.
Does any commissioner have questions?
Here, would you say?
The disagreement is, the disagreement is in the amount of the $310, is that correct?
Correct. Okay, go ahead.
I'm just going to talk.
If that's all right.
Here's the problem we have. We have twofold problems. Number one, this is $310, but $310 is not important. It's the principle that's being established. This was a post-death, debt. It was incurred by the estate. It wasn't a debt that was incurred by the intestator prior to the person. It wasn't a debt incurred by Deborah Myers prior to the estate. So those debts are treated differently than the debt, the other debts that you probably mentioned in here that were owed. Those debts, if there's no money in the estate, clearly don't get paid. Now, post-debt or estate debts, they have, they must be paid before final settlement. And the problem here is that, and this is what puts us in a dilemma. This is what commissioners get into dilemmas all the time, is how to figure out how to be just and do great things. The problem here is that you're right, but by contacting the bond company, he couldn't do anything about it. He's right in that he could not do anything about the fact that the court required a bond on this. Who you needed to come see was the clerk, and come to the county commission here and get us to relieve you from the bond requirement. That's the way it's done. The problem we have here is that now you get into a question of legal obligations. It's not that, it's not that you are personally liable, it's that if you accept the appointment as administrator, I believe you're administrator in this county, if you accept an appointment, that means you have a fiduciary obligation. That means an obligation to take care of money and account for it. A fiduciary obligation to make sure that the monies were properly spent. Now, when I reviewed, when I reviewed your, the information submitted on the estate here, I must have left it in my office, so anyway, I'll go by memory. There was, there was a car, and there was a checking account, and there was some cash that was there. I see no record of any other debt of the post-estate debt than this bond. So the car, and the, there were, in the accounts, there were some money that could have been used to pay this debt, and it should have been. Now, when you get into legal obligations of phone calls, and I told them to cancel, and they wouldn't cancel, and all that, and whether they had an obligation to, this is the wrong place. We're not, we're not a court. We either, we can't decide those issues. So that, that needs to be hashed out in magistrate court or in circuit court. So that, because we're a probate court. We either accept the final settlement, or we don't accept the final settlement. If we don't accept the final settlement, then I assume, and you're not going to pay it, and continue to object, which means that the bonding company's only choice would be to sue you. Then it would be in the right court. It would be either magistrate court or circuit court, wherever they decide to sue you for that amount. What we're looking at here today is, were there assets, and is there a post, post-death, an estate debt, a debt that was incurred by the estate and not by the intestator? And that's the case. So we're not, you know, to accept the final settlement. You said, we're not to accept the final settlement.
We're going to move not to accept the final settlement.
I second.
Same thing. You have a motion in a second. Not to accept the settlement. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed. And then have a vote goes. That's, that's our result. Okay? You want to take it slow? Okay, I have a motion.
I have a motion.
To re, to, what was your motion again?
My motion, not to accept the final settlement.
Not to accept the final settlement.
Not to accept the final settlement.
In a second.
In a second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. All opposed?
All opposed.
Motion carried.
Motion carried.
Well, if I say, what would resolve the issue now, and I saw that you said that you would be willing to pay, I think if you would work out an agreement with him, then we would be able to resolve the issue. Because I don't want either of you going to court for this matter, and it's a small matter, but I think if you work it out, resolve it, then we would be able to bring it back here to then resolve the issue.
Yeah, we just don't have, we don't have the jurisdiction to decide what the true amount should be, if any. But I think I made it clear that it's not really your personal debt, it was, as a, we resolve it as administrator. Do you understand that?
I do.
Okay.
That was illogical and reasonable, what you did, it's 90 points.
Yeah, exactly. So if you work that out, then you could continue.
May I?
Sure.
Speak with Mr. Palata out in the hall.
Oh, you have a show.
Later in this meeting, announce if we can come to a settlement, and then you can revisit the matter.
That's no problem whatsoever, that's fine.
That'd be great.
We'll talk out in the hall.
Okay, that'd be great.
Look out our differences.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It usually doesn't work like that.
That, this is, this is a first again. Thank you very much.
We hope it works out, well, we show the young people something, a new way that we don't see around.
Yes, talking to each other can work out a solution. Thank you.
Thanks for your patience. Here's my... Now, we're just going to bring it on down. Recognition of elected officials and highlights of their duties. Can you say that?
Recognition of elected officials and highlights of their duties.
Okay, and then you asked any elected official who wants to stand and give a highlight of their duties.
Who wants to stand and give a highlight of their duties?
Am I the only one here?
You're the only one there. That's a shame.
I thought the assessor was out in the hallway there.
Yeah, I'll go get him.
Okay.
I'll stand up here.
You might want to identify yourself.
Yeah, they might not know who you are.
Madam Commissioners, I am the sheriff of Montague County. My name is Al Kismar. I'm also the treasurer of the county, which means before these guys get to dole out any money, it gets to go through my fingers first. Our duties as sheriff and treasurer are that we, as sheriff, operate the law enforcement division of the Montague County Sheriff's Office. We investigate crimes, we deal with people that are arrested by transporting them to the regional jail. We operate the home confinement unit, office, which monitors people that are put on alternative sentencing, and one of those alternative sentences is home confinement. So a magistrate court or circuit court judge can sentence someone to home confinement, we have officers that their sole purpose is, their sole job is, to monitor those folks while they're in home confinement, and make sure that they don't commit any other crimes, and that they follow the court order that the magistrate or circuit court judge has imposed on them. So we do that. We also have, stepping aside, we operate court security in magistrate court, family court, and circuit court. This is Gary White. Gary's the chief of our circuit court security officers, and he has a staff of 18. 19, sorry, we must have hired one I didn't know. He has a staff of 19. Now, the big guy out in the hallway is one of his staff. Now, when you have people that big, you don't need a whole lot of people.
Step in here so they can see you.
You can't miss him.
Yeah.
Now, I know there are a few people in here that have hair like me, and some white, that probably remember Night Court, with Harry Anderson.
Bull.
We call Robert Gole.
Bull.
You feel safe with him around?
Yeah.
You actually feel safe.
Don't make him mad. The person standing there, which is a little bit smaller than Gole, is Perry Palmer. Now, Perry's my chief deputy. Chief deputy in a sheriff's office is a person that's in second, is second in charge of the office. He runs the daily operations, he makes decisions with or without my approval, because he has that latitude to do that. Now, if it's something major, we discuss it, and then we make a decision. The daily operations and things that go on on a daily basis are up to him, and he makes those decisions. The other things that we do in our office, we have K-9 officers, we have three dogs in our department, we have a SWAT team, which consists of 15 people that are on the SWAT team. Those are people that SWAT means special weapons and tactics. They're called out if you have like a bank robbery hostage situation, a barricaded person with a gun, maybe somebody that goes into a school with weapons or something like that. We have a four-person sniper team. We have spotters and snipers on those teams, in case we need those things in a hostage situation. We hope they don't get to that point, but if, if the situation dictates it, then the chief or I would have to give the command for somebody to be shot in that situation if they had somebody hostage and they were not being able to be talked to anymore, and it got to the point where things have just deteriorated so far that you really believe someone's going to die here if you don't take action right away. So that's what they do. We have a support staff, secretary of staff and reception of nine people, so we also, as I said, as a sheriff, you're treasurer of the county, so we operate the tax office too, which kept stepping. The madam commissioners, let's see, this is Kelly Palmer. Kelly is my chief deputy. Now, Kelly gets to see all the money and everything first, and she, I really don't get to see it, she tells me how much it is.
It goes to her fingers.
It goes to her fingers. And so Kelly runs the day-to-day operations in the tax office, and they handle a lot of money. All the money that comes into the county goes through the tax office first, as we seed it in, and then between the tax office and the county clerk's office, they know exactly how much money we have to work with in the county. What am I forgetting, chief?
Ain't covered it all, sir.
Okay. In the sheriff's office operations, which includes law enforcement and the tax office, we have 104 employees, we operate five different budgets, and in those five different budgets, we have a total of $7.2 million a year to operate those five different budgets. Questions from the commissioners?
Ask them questions, now it's time to ask. Here you go.
Hold on, okay.
I should have known.
Will there be an increase in staff when we have the new building?
Yes, when the new judicial annex opens up, we are looking at hiring new or additional, not new, Gary. Additional court security officers, because we'll still have operations that we have to do here, and we have operations that we'll have to do in the new building as well. Now, the last thing I'd like to do, can, can I ask for some more money in my budget? You seem like you're tough on your seats.
No.
So could I get like $2 million more dollars added?
No.
No.
Good job.
Congratulations on your essays. I think we're excellent. You did a very good job. Thank you.
You can ask if there's any other elected official here.
Is there any other elected official here?
It's Mark. Okay, great.
Why not, Mark?
He's identifying.
Hey, happy birthday.
Whoever knows who he is.
Hey, thank you.
Hey.
Hey, happy birthday.
Would you identify yourself, sir? Whoever knows who you are.
My name is Mark Music, and I'm the county assessor. And...
Every county has one.
Every, you know, this is odd. This is odd, really, because usually, my position, we're the last one that gets to come up and talk, you know? You pick teams, everybody picks that last, because we're the least liked. And because our role is we place value on your properties, so basically, when that value gets placed, people want to pay taxes. So they look to the assessor as the bad guy. But Nash Alley, we are the good guy. Okay? Our role is to place value on your home, not to raise or lower taxes, and it's your real estate side that we work with. And there's all facets of it. Unlike the sheriff, who was able to identify some of his key components in his office, I can't, because they're working. So, and, and we're, you know, we get monitored by the state tax department, so today our monitor's coming up in Charleston to monitor the office. My staff's putting everything together in there, so likely would have been nice to introduce them, but they're working. So, but we're made up of about 38 staff. We have our office here on the second floor. My staff are all divided out on the second floor, where we handle personal property, which consists of your vehicles. So if you own a vehicle, you all own a vehicle. So you're getting back and forth here somehow to work and...
Mommy's there.
They own a vehicle. If you own a vehicle...
Be careful, he's trying to figure out whether your value's high enough.
If you own a vehicle, it's taxed, okay, based on your vehicle. So we have a group of ladies that take care of that. We have a group of ladies that take care of all the deeds. When things are sold, they get all that stuff entered. We have a mapping department, which maps the whole county. So if you ever get an opportunity to go into the office, it's all laid out with maps, they're paper maps now, but we're hoping that within another 12, 14 months, things will be digital, which will be allowed either through GIS, or through access or through your computer. Then we've got our real estate section over here. Upstairs on the third floor, we have a group of five ladies that do our data entry, which means all the information is given to us by tax players, we send their forms in, the girls upstairs enter that into the computer, which then gets sent over to Charleston. to Charleston. Uh, I have two gentlemen in the basement. Not that they've been bad, but they're two of our mappers. So they're down and they map everything. And right across from us is the old sheriff's department, which I've got a whole new appraisal unit, which we just brought on. And those are the folks that are out at this point, valuing property. Uh, so, they're busy, we're busy. It's, uh, it's an ongoing process for our office because we never stop. And, uh, one of our biggest trends is we're trying to do is to please the commission from a standpoint of getting in compliance with the state, uh, along with the other fifty-two counties currently. So, that's a little bit of our role and what we do. Do you have any questions?
Are you going to jump my parents' property up again?
Well, we look at the vows. Have your parents added AP to their home? That they haven't recorded in the last five, six years?
You motherfucker.
You think of something? But just to let you know, we, uh, had our, uh, second forum the other night, education forum, and we had folks that attended, and actually it was done by West TV. So, thanks to Mr. Ellis. So, actually I'm on YouTube now, so that gives you an opportunity to view that, uh, in that fashion. We're moving forward. I might be like the sheriff too. I could always use more money in my budget too, so.
Don't do it, Daniel.
Wow, that was quick.
Well, turning.
Anything else?
Thank you.
All right.
Um, the rest of our elected officials were invited, but unfortunately they could not make it. Uh, that being Marsha Ashdown, who's the prosecuting attorney, uh, Jean Friend, circuit clerk, and Carrie Blaney, who's the county clerk, and she's right now in the midst of the, um.
Elections.
Early voting. So, so they were not able to make it because they wish you all the best.
Diane, we might want to give Mayor Westover and I saw Ron Snyder. Is he still here?
Yeah.
Uh, town of Granville, uh, chance for a brief comment on the relationship of your municipalities with the county. It might be helpful information, uh, if you don't mind, Mayor Blue.
Hi, my name's Dave Johnson. I'm the mayor of the city of Westover. These two guys, before we were a little tough act to follow. I mean, they've got a lot of things going on, more so than we do. We, we basically, I'm the chief administrator of the city of Westover. My, some of my, some of my duties are to make sure that we provide better services for the citizens of Westover. We keep the place clean. We plow the snow. We fill the puddles. We do just every day, you know, just my day work most of the time. But it's important work. It's important to the people that vote for us every two years. And, uh, we have, uh, a lot of responsibility. We have people that we're responsible to. We do a lot of, I know people within the room, we've heard a lot about our annexations attempts in the last six years that I've been in office, and, uh, we have, uh, been successful on three of those that, uh, one's stipend court, but we've been successful on those. And one of the reasons we want to expand the tax base is we don't want to raise the taxes for the people that, that pay taxes in the city. We just want a wider tax base to draw from. So, and that would enable us to, uh, pay more for our employees, offer and provide better services, more police officers, the whole nine yards. So, it's kind of, um, boring when you follow the sheriff and, uh, and the tax guy because they got a lot more to talk about than we do. But, uh, we're proud of our city. We're proud of the people in our city and, uh, council's, uh, been very supportive of a lot of the efforts that we've made in the past. And, uh, we're not done. We're still working toward that goal. So, but you guys did well on your essays, obviously. I kind of took my surprise. I didn't know it was going to happen today. I came in to complain a couple times, so. I'm not going to have the real guys in the seats. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mayor. Ron?
I'm Greg.
Did you want to give them a couple comments about the Granville, the town on the move, the University Time Center, about to get a new ballpark there?
I'm Ron Snyder. I'm the municipal administrator of the city of Granville, town of Granville. I'm not like a mayor except I'm not elected. I'm appointed. I'm appointed by the council. And my duties are the same as a mayor. I take care of the streets, the police department, anything citizens might need. And with a lot of effort we have, but in ballpark, if you've ever been to the town center, that's part of Granville. And that ballpark is, was a joint effort by everybody. And that's coming, it's coming to Montague County. Got a pretty good job, a pretty easy job. I've got a lot of good people working underneath me that does their thing and makes my job a lot easier.
Amen to that, Ron.
I take care of the budget, which is about three million dollars. We do okay.
Any questions up here, Commissioners?
Want to raise my budget?
We're, we're going to think about borrowing money from Granville.
Keep in mind that I'm the only one that didn't ask for more money.
You just won an annexation.
We marked that down. We marked that down.
Madam Chair, since I know we're going to be breaking soon and in case some people are going to leave, if it's all right, I just wanted to comment, since you're all up here. First, I'm, as a person who's been involved in the schools, first I'm honored that you're able to sit with us. And I do want to thank the principals, the teachers, and the parents who made this possible. Um, I think it's just a real exciting time that when we see, a lot of times, y-you represent the best of the youth. We usually read in the paper about all the other situations, and I think it's time that we also counteract that with what you have done. Um, and also when you go back and talk to, uh, the students and your friends, as much as you see everything we do, the hardest thing that I think is what you're experiencing right now is everyone's staring at you, the TV's on, and you know that no matter what you say or do, like my wife usually says, that sometimes when someone speaks, I give a face that, you know, I shouldn't do. So, the hardest part is the awkwardness of just being in front. It's so easy when you're sitting down there and then you're watching like Jeopardy and you say, oh, I know that answer. But when you're up here in front of everyone dictating, what, dictating and trying to resolve issues, it's, it's really awkward. And that's why, I think that's why they built this here, so you could see that my feet are always moving or my hands or something like that. But it, but please, when you go back to tell them that it isn't just making the decisions, but it's also being in front of everyone and having to do what you think is best. And I'll, if Madam Chair, I'll allow the other Commissioner to say something.
I don't know, Sheila.
Yeah, I know.
You don't have.
Give a limit. You better give a limit.
Tell him, go ahead.
Give him a limit.
I'm just real thrilled with this. This is something we've talked about for a couple years now, and I, it's come to fruition. Uh, I, I, I just think it's fantastic, uh, to have, uh, young people see what the government does and how it works. And so many times, uh, you, you grow up, I grew up, I'm native from here, grew up from here, and I didn't really know what the commission did until I became a Commissioner. I was shocked as to what the commission did. Uh, and I was, I was a practicing attorney and, and I appeared before the commission a number of times. And you just don't know all the things that the commission's involved in until you sit in these chairs. So I look forward to the day that one or all three of you sit in these chairs officially and you can run this county for us. So, uh, thanks for being here. And thanks to moms and dads and teachers and everyone to, uh, create such promising young, uh, young ladies that we have here. Thank you. Save the, the best for last.
You want me to go again?
You just lost a million in your budget.
One, one of the things I think is, uh, very significant about today is that, uh, this county commission has moved towards cooperation with not only government entities, but the Board of Education with, with the school system. One of the things to reach our young people, uh, education is more than just a classroom, as you teachers know. Uh, involvement of the parents is, is a very critical part of the education of our young people. And, and I think that's what makes today significant. Uh, one of the things that, when I grew up, I mean, all you knew was that there was people that told you what to do. That was government. And you had to do it or you went to jail or you want something happened to you bad. But today, I think we need the involvement of youth at a very early age to learn our foundation in our, our system of government because they are the future of tomorrow. Uh, Robert F. Kennedy once said, and I worked at the Kennedy Center when it first opened, there's a plaque out there that says, "Youth is a time for learning." And, and I think it's government's responsibility as well as, as the education system to help educate our youth. And, and I hope that this is not the last of these type of activities between government, county, cities, and, and our, our young people of, of Montague County. But I thank you all for coming today, and, and I think cooperation is what makes this a very special day. And thank you. And it's eleven o'clock. You can say, do I have a motion for recess?
Wait, can, wait.
Oh, you have an appointment?
No, no, I, I would, if it's possible, I would just like to get, uh, is she here?
She is here.
Uh, an appointment approved, so she could go back to work.
Yeah, I would do that next week.
Okay.
Yes.
Sorry, I'm going to wait.
Oh, oh, okay. Uh, we, as, as the county commissioners, we're, we're the employee or employer of all the employees. Even, even the sheriff's deputy, the sheriff's deputies and the, all these other departments, they are the employer, but we're co-employers along with the other elected officials. Uh, Mary is, uh, the new director of the Youth Services Center, and she's here, uh, and I'm going to have Diane read the letter. She's here and we will accept her appointment here if, if we get the votes.
Okay, I'm writing to inform you of the recent hiring of Mary Ketterman as the new director of Montague County Youth Services Center effective May ninth, two thousand and fourteen. We are pleased that Ms. Ketterman has accepted our offer of employment and anticipate a very positive work relationship with her as well as positive outcome for the center. Please join us in welcoming her to the center.
I move that we approve her employment as director of the Youth Services Center.
I second.
You have a motion?
You have a motion.
And a second?
And a second.
All in favor, signify. I was saying aye.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carried.
Motion carried.
Welcome aboard, Mayor.
Thank you.
Now, you want to say you, you open the floor for a motion to recess?
Well, pizza's not here yet.
Pizza's not here, yes, so we can keep on working.
So we're going to continue until he gets here. No.
But if anyone needed to leave.
All right. We're coming back. They're going to come back and finish us with this, right?
Somewhere, yeah, because they can.
If they can.
You're going to stay with us, aren't you? You're not going to leave us, are you? After you get your pizza and leave?
At least has to leave. But we're trying to get the pizza here as soon as we can. Thank all of you for coming.
Thank you very much.
If I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
Commissioners?
Sure, go ahead.
Keep the date June seventh in mind. We're having a dedication to the Willing G Boulevard at the, uh, the gateway, and there's going to be a lot of people. I'm sure you'll receive invitations officially from the developer, but if not, then I'll make sure that, uh, let you guys know what time and everything and all the.
That's where again. June seventh.
Congratulations again to you guys.
It's a Saturday. How much longer do we expect before the?
Ten.
Huh?
Fifteen, twenty minutes. We ordered it as soon as we knew. Like, it just takes them a while to get that many ready. Sorry.
Renetta, you want to call them Renetta?
Yeah.
Let's do Renetta. Call them Renetta and McCorr.
Renetta, Renetta and McCorr.
Come on down.
Good morning. Some items for reimbursements. First is the JABG grant for March two thousand and fourteen, one thousand.
Renetta, you might explain what your job is and what you're doing so that the young ladies would know.
Um, I am the, uh, grant coordinator for Montague County Commission, and a lot of the grants that we receive are for other agencies in the county. Um, we act as a pass-through, so we take in the money from the state and then we take, pass it on to the agency that, uh, did the work. So, that's what we're doing today. We're requesting reimbursement from the state, uh, for a couple of different grants, and they're going to, you guys are going to vote on them. Um, the first one is a JABG grant for March two thousand and fourteen, one thousand five ninety-six oh two. Second is David Port Center Grant for April of two thousand and fourteen, nineteen thousand six twenty-eight thirty-four. And the last is the ESGP, which is the Emergency Solutions Grant Program for Caritas House, Bartlett House, and Connecting Link for fourteen thousand four twenty forty-six, month of April two thousand and fourteen.
I move to reimburse.
Okay, six seconds.
Second.
And a motion?
We have a motion.
For approval?
For approval.
And a second?
And a second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Told you.
Opposed.
Motion carried.
Motion carried.
I have, um, one item, memorandum of understanding for the JABG grant with, um, along with MASP, partners with DHHR for the Juvenile Accountability Block Grant, Delinquency Intervention Program. We just ask that the county commission, um, enter into the memorandum of understanding for the MASP for JABG.
No for approval?
You can say a second.
Go ahead. We have a motion for approval?
We have a motion for approval.
And a second?
And a second. All in favor? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
And, and just for the record, I have requested this memorandum of understanding, and I think this will help out, uh, the Morgantown Area Youth Service Project. And I want to thank also the DHHR for doing this. I think this will help, again, since we have, uh, several new county commissioners here, this will help the youth in our community that will be able to work with them to help those individuals who aren't as fortunate as you are and need that extra help. And that's what this will do. Thank you.
You want to move on for one more thing?
Yeah, let's go ahead and continue until we.
Of course.
Okay. This is my part. Um, I get in the mail and then do the agenda and every, all the letters that come in during the week. If it's something that needs to be acted on or if the Commissioners just to be aware of what's coming in, this is the time to do that. This is a letter from the Department of the Army, Army Corps of Engineers. Thank you for your letter dated March twenty-sixth, two thousand and fourteen regarding your offer to contribute funds toward the part-time operation of the upper Monaga Ella River locks for recreational purposes. We have begun the formal process to obtain the approval for negotiating a memorandum of agreement with you concerning contributing funds for recreational lockage that are beyond the level of service defined by the Corps of Engineers' inland marine transportation system. This approval process involves coordination with our division and headquarters offices, the Department of the Army, the Office of Management and Budget, the House and Senate Appropriations Committee. We will forward, we will inform you as soon as we have a decision. So, this is, um, to explain, the, the locks are normally closed, the locks on the river, you've all seen them. They're normally closed. They don't have anyone to operate them. So in order to open them up for fishing tournaments and use by the public, we are going to be the pass-through agency where people will contribute to the commission. We will then contribute to the Army Corps of Engineers to have people on duty on the weekends to keep the locks open so they can be open and closed for, uh, boat traffic. So this informed us that they're working on that. Okay. A few weeks ago, the commission asked for an opinion of the prosecuting attorney as to their ability to, uh, to do anything about mudslides and landslides. So when we have a question that requires a legal action, we ask our assistant prosecuting attorney, who's Philip Magro. And Philip wrote back to us that he looked at these statutes, which is the West Virginia Code. If you've ever seen those, it's a volume of about twenty-eight green books, and it's all the laws that the legislature prepares and approves for the county commissions to operate under. Um, so Phil is advising that he has checked the statute and there is no direct coverage of commission on this issue. So there's nothing that the Commissioners can do about landslides and mudslides.
Now, we have, uh, I have learned that from both the flood plain and, uh, the geological survey, that they identify certain slide-prone areas. Uh, this is something, this is something that we often find ourselves in a quandary here because we know it's a health and safety. If you all were familiar about the slide in Washington State that, that killed a bunch of people, the houses slid down. people, the houses slid down because of heavy rains, we, because of our terrain, the way it is, and we had this rough winter and heavy rains, we got concerned here as a commission. And I brought it up, is we have any jurisdiction to try to prevent people from putting themselves in a situation where slides could kill people in their houses? Or we've got a slide problem with the road over there, River Road? And the first step I wanted to take, do we have any legal authority? Well, the prosecuting attorney, who we listened to, the attorney, says that, no, we have no direct legal authority that we can do anything. So what we might want to do is to write the legislature, because the legislature and the governor, the House of Delegates, and the Senate, the state senators, they pass the laws, and then it has to be signed by the governor, that allow us to operate. So I would, do you all think it would be a good idea to write to our legislators and say that based on this finding, we feel that the flood, slide-prone areas may create health and safety issues for our people, and ask them to look into possibly giving the counties some jurisdiction in controlling this? Do you think that's a good idea? What do you think?
Yeah.
Tell me more, why do you think it's a good idea?
Because we don't want people, like, get hurt, and then you can't do anything about it, and then it'll just, like, end up with a bunch of things in court because they're going to try and do something about it.
Very good. What do you want to say here?
I think it's a good idea.
So let's move to send the letter to our state legislators and senators to look into giving the county some jurisdiction over slide-prone areas in their counties.
You get all that, remember all that? This is a lawyer, you've got to remember.
All right, just say ditto after this, okay? We're going to move to send the letter to the legislators and senators in the state and ask them to look into the possibility of giving the counties some jurisdiction over slide-prone areas within their counties. Say ditto.
Ditto.
I second.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
We have a motion.
And a second?
And a second.
All in favor?
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carried.
Motion carried.
And please understand, the second is very important because without the second, we can't move on. So even though she's saying just second all the time, if she would not say second, then her, his motion would die. So that's why it's very important to work together because you always need two votes.
The other, the other thing to understand is that the president of the commission, which is elected by the other commissioners on an annual basis, cannot make a motion. So whoever the president is can sort of coordinate motions. Now, the president can second a motion, but can't make a motion.
And then once they decide, once they decide, then it's on me to do the letter. So I do all the work around here.
We talk about work she does.
We make more work for everyone.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have a letter, this is from Lockview Limited Partnership, and they're asking that the commission approve a letter of support for this agency to receive low-income housing tax credit to build a low-income housing development. This is going to be located out on the Grafton Road. Townhouse is on Lockwood Drive. There are four residential buildings and one community building. There will be 32 units, laundry facilities, multifamily residential rentals. So it's up to the commission to decide whether they will write a letter of support for this company to receive tax credits to build this project.
Do we know anything more about it?
We've done a lot of these in the past.
I know we have, I'm just wondering, is the neighborhood?
Lockwood Drive on 119 Grafton Road is, I believe there's townhouses out there now, if I'm correct, there's Dairy Mart?
It's the housing development right beside of the Dairy Mart on Grafton Road. If you're facing the Dairy Mart, it's to the right of there. They have probably, I would say probably 45, 50 units there.
Oh, okay, so it's not, it's not a?
It's not a housing development, it's an apartment complex.
So this, this would be inconsistent with the other houses in there. It would be consistent?
It would be consistent.
The one thing I don't recall is, when they talked about tax credits, are they talking about county property tax credits? Are they talking about?
No, IRS. IRS, Internal Revenue Code, Section 42.
As long as they aren't going to take our money.
Do we know when this might be come to fruition? Only reason why I say this, because of the concerns that the commissioners have had about the two trail courts being La Mesa and Marcellus, you know?
Oh, Marcellus.
That they're going to have to leave. Could this be in place by then, or do we know the timing? Because that might be something now that we could pass on, because I will pass that on immediately.
They probably don't know, Tom.
Yeah.
Because, because obviously.
They haven't got approval.
Well, it looks like their financial plan is based on the fact that they get these tax credits. They might not proceed if they don't get the tax credits.
It's early, early stages, so.
Yeah.
Of course, we know, we've been through the financing project, how long it takes and times to get their financing in order.
Yeah.
Well, hopefully, and I'm just thinking, maybe, you know, I'll talk to the homeless community, maybe if we can expedite this, so, because of the need, so that may help those individuals. Okay? So this actually could help us out.
Can you say that? Did you know where we're going? Did you say that?
We're going to move to forward the letter to the tax credit.
To support the tax credit.
I second the motion.
Okay. You have a motion?
We have a motion.
And a second?
And a second.
All in favor?
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Very good.
You can take over.
Yeah.
Okay, the next item, we have a letter from Glenn Gaynor, state auditor. This is regarding a form that needs to be completed in order for the auditor's office to look at the budgets of each county and determine whether they have sufficient funds to allow for the raises of the county officials. It was passed in the legislature recently. Sheriff Kizner went to the meeting on this, so.
Very briefly, they had a meeting in Charleston on this last week, and I went down, it was last Thursday. It was a pretty brief meeting, the form is pretty straightforward, and basically asked for expenditures out of last year's budget and this year's budget, and for any future expenditures that may not be thought of right now. It's pretty straightforward, though. There were a couple of issues. They had two attorneys from the auditor's office that worked on the form, found a couple glitches in it. They did have sample one done by Canal County, and Auditor Gaynor said because they were right there, they could do it and get it back to them quickly. And Canal County found a couple of things that they weren't quite sure what they were asking for on the form, so the attorneys are writing guidelines for all the counties to go by. So I think once you get it, it'll be pretty straightforward. And basically, it is, the bottom line is, are the finances there to do the increases or not, and that's what they're looking for. And they are going to probably put a deadline on it for counties to have a return back to the auditor's office.
Would you go ahead and explain about the fact that this is the first raise in years and why the county association? The sheriff is also the president of West Virginia Association of Counties, that's all county officials, and he was one of the leaders in getting this bill passed, and I thought it would be a good opportunity for you to explain what the bill was and why.
What we're talking about is the compensation increase for elected officials. A lot of people, when you say a raise for elected officials, why, why would our elected officials need a raise? As the commissioners, I'm in a position as elected official, and yes, I knew what the pay was when I took the job. However, I have people that are deputies that with not a whole lot of overtime, make more money than I do. I'm responsible for 104 employees, as they're responsible for all the county operations, as our assessor is responsible for the numerous things that he's responsible for. The last time elected officials had a raise in West Virginia was eight years ago. There are a group of elected officials that for the last two years have been asking the legislature to approve this. The other thing a lot of people don't understand is, when elected officials get a pay raise, that comes from the county commission. That's, the money comes from money generated in your county where you work. Some people are of the opinion, well, you're taking that away from the state budget, and we're not. That money comes directly from the counties within the areas where those elected officials serve. So what the auditor's office was taxed with doing is, in this, in this bill that, or law that was passed to allow, or not the law, but they passed to allow the elected officials throughout the state to get a raise, as long as the auditor's office went to each individual county and did an accounting of their income, and made sure that whatever county coffers, what their money was, money situation was, what they had paid out, what they anticipate paying out in this year's budget is such that once all that's taken care of, and all the concerns of the county commission are covered within their budget in each individual county, and they still have enough money to give those raises, the auditor's office will then certify that report and say Montague County is in an economic situation where they're able to give those raises to their county officials, elected officials. And when a lot of general public thinks about it, they think, oh my God, you know, we're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars, and really not. We have eight elected officials in this county, there are some counties that have five commissioners, so we give them 10 elected officials. So you're talking about, for me in particular, the raise that I would be getting would be about $5,400, a little shy of that. But when you break that down over an eight-year period, we have employees that generally from this commission, on a yearly basis, get at least $1,000 raise, if it's on across-the-board raise. We don't. We don't get that as elected officials. So that's why, when this finally passed, the auditor's office was put in, in control of making sure that all the counties could afford to give the raise.
Thank you, Sheriff. Now, realize all the money, so you not only got to know English, you got to know math in this job, too.
The forms are due May 16th to the auditor's office, and I have Renetta working on this now, with all the financial information staying requested.
Do you need a motion just to verify so we have it as public record?
I don't think so.
Oh, okay.
You've all signed your forms. Okay. Solid Waste Authority, we have a letter from the state Solid Waste Management Board just advising us that Mr. Tom Arnold, who is the appointee of the county commission to serve on the Solid Waste Management Board, his term will be expiring July 1st, 2014. So he's to be either reappointed or replaced by the commission for an additional three-year term. So that's just for their information. We're always looking for people who are interested in serving on boards and authorities. They need to complete an application with a background check form, then they're interviewed, and then the commissioners decide if they're going to approve the appointment to serve on a board. Okay, that's all I have for correspondence.
Okay, I just saw the delivery man.
Oh, that's good. We'll give plates to stop.
Ask for a motion to recess.
You want me to leave?
Ask for a motion, say, "Do I have a motion to recess?"
Do I have a motion to recess?
Say, yes.
Yeah.
And a second. Need a second?
She said.
Oh, did she?
Yes.
Quiet.
Okay, now, you have a motion and a second?
I have a motion and a second.
All in favor?
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion.
Motion carried.
There you go.
You're in recess, too.
Okay, we're back off of recess, called the meeting to order. Mr. Patton, we gave you the opportunity to talk, see if you could resolve that issue with the estate.
He did offer to knock off the interest and penalty for late payment from the $310, making it $270, and I will send him a check for that amount, but he is not here, he couldn't stay to confirm that, so I don't know if that means you can vote or not vote, taking my word that I'm sending him a check for $270.
Well, I'll, I'll accept your word, because we can always reverse it if, if he comes back and says something different, but based on your representations, I think it's proper to accept the final settlement, and I'll so move.
I second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, we really appreciate it.
Thank you, as always, for your time.
Back to correspondents. Solid Waste Authority, county commission appointee.
Okay, we did that.
Oh, we did? Who did we appoint?
Well, we didn't, we just.
No, it was just a letter reminding us that Tom Arnold's term will expire.
Oh, oh, okay, so unfinished business, and we're ready to move on?
Well, that letter said that there was two appointments.
Yes, we do have another. It is.
So there's another vacancy?
No, his term doesn't expire on, in 2014.
Okay, I thought Tom Arnold was our only representative.
No, we have two.
Who's the other one?
I believe, Robert Connell, McConnell, Bob McConnell.
We'll probably need to interview.
When that term runs out.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Okay.
Last week during work session, we interviewed Steve Morris for an appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Yeah.
Do you wish to do that?
Yes, move that we appoint Steve Morris.
Second. I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The next, we are ready to advertise for bids for the paving of the road to the Cannon Adoption Center in Notepole. Like to set that date for May 28th at 10:15 a.m. Motion.
So move.
Second, I have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
The only update I have on the volunteer fire departments is that we wrote another letter to Phil Magro asking additional questions. He was going to refer this to Marcia. Marcia's working on a response to our request on behalf of the fire departments, or an opinion from the Attorney General.
You know, one comment about that is, is I think that issue's got distorted a little bit. It's not that this commission doesn't support volunteer fire departments, we do that. We've done that in the past, we continue to do that with $20,000 a year. The, the thing now, I think, that we're doing is, we need to be, make sure that whatever we do conforms to existing law and statute. There's also, I think, a need for some discussion, if in fact we do raise more revenue, how that's going to be administered and managed and dispersed, that needs to be resolved. There's some other issues here that we've never really talked about, and volunteer fire departments have never discussed with us, because I'm not real clear on defining the difference between a levy and a fee. Now, someone told me, well, the difference between a levy and a fee is, a fee is everyone's assessed a fee. Levy is on property. And if, I'm not too sure if that's the only difference, but there's the factor of, what about the city of Morgantown? What about the municipalities? If we would, whatever we would say move on, if we move on anything, what impact does that have on the cities, and what impact does that have on the revenue that would be raised for disbursement to the volunteer fire department? So there's some issues there that still need resolved before we can, we could ever get to the point of saying, okay, we're going to do something.
I totally agree with that, and I think, I think the distortion exists in the fact that people are taking this as. the fact that people are taking this as an up or down thing, like you just pointed out. I have a real problem with assessing a fee on only those people that pay property tax, real property tax. That's the way it's written currently. That means that all the nonprofits, all the people that have exemptions for paying real property tax, that may have huge buildings, that may have huge potential liabilities for, I mean, for volunteer fire departments to put out their fires, aren't paying anything. That doesn't make any sense to me. Normally, a fire fee is based on the square footage of your building.
Right.
Whatever your square footage is, that's, that's, so I don't, you know, that's, that's the distortion I see here, is that they're presenting like, this is ready to go, all we got to do is say yes or no. Well, A, it's not ready to go. B, I have some real problems with the way it's composed currently, but I don't think we should be spending a lot of our time rewriting it at this juncture when it's clear from the advice from Phil Megrow that it's going to have to go to the referendum. And even the people that are proposing it are saying that a referendum will lose. So, you know, to put it on a ballot, it costs 60-some thousand dollars if we do it privately. If we try to tack it on February, I don't know how late we have till that. But to do that, but you've got to have, you're going to have to at least have a public hearing. So all the things that you said, plus there's a bunch of other unanswered questions, and it's not just a matter of us saying, yes, we're going to, we're going to collect this fee, and where do the money goes? Maybe that's the way the state and the feds work, but this commission doesn't work that way. We want to know where the money is coming from, it's coming from people fairly and justly, and where it's going, and we keep track of every penny.
The one, the one thing that I think is happening on this issue is I think there's some politics being played.
Sure.
Because I know there is one person that's running, said that, in fact, I saw it on the news, saying that we, we don't need anyone's permission to do it. And that's so. I mean, if we wanted to give the fire, volunteer fire departments $100,000 each, in terms of the budget considerations, it would just be irresponsible at this point, not having any rationale or any system in place, let alone where the funds are going to come from.
That's the reason we want taxes.
But there's, unfortunately, I think there's, there's a faction out there that's saying, oh, the county commission can give volunteer fire departments more money if they wanted to, they just don't want to give it to them. That's not true. That's, that's false representation of this whole issue.
I have just three quick issues. One is the bill that was proposed to us, I had a concern, and I saw Mr. Bartola also did, about accountability. That being that if, if it passed and the money, I wanted the county commission to oversee it, because we're responsible for all funds, and they wanted it sent to just a group of volunteer fire department members to divvy it out, and I had a real concern about that. But two questions that quickly came up, and an individual who is an official over at the city of Morgantown said that if we were to put it on the levy, put on referendum, their interpretation was, since it's a county, everyone in the county, even the citizens of Morgantown, you're not permitted to separate that. So right there is going to be, it's an issue that.
That was the point I was making.
Yeah.
That's the point I was making.
Right.
You know, you can't.
By law, we can't separate.
You can't just say, well, we're only going to go after these people.
Right.
And I don't think this only people that pay real property tax is a legitimate discriminator that you can legally use.
And, and, and said that they would definitely look into it if they were, you know, there was a concern there, and I think that's a legitimate constitutional question.
Exactly, that's my point.
The other question, and I thought it was interesting, and I want it, Ben, I want it real clear, it wasn't us, but it was the individual representing the volunteer fire department talked about consolidation of the fire department. So since they mentioned it, then I'm going to say, I believe that the three county commissioners should not be involved with that, but that would have to be something that the volunteer fire departments would have to work among themselves if they wanted to consolidate to possibly get these funds. So that's a whole nother area that I think needs to be looked at, because once you start opening the doors, you're also going to have to have accountability, and all the books are going to have to be checked and audited. And, and everything opens up differently, and that's why we need to be real careful what you think you really may want, because people don't understand the consequences.
And I'll just add to, to what you were saying, because you're so true. People don't seem to understand a basic concept, and that is, these, the three county commissioners set up here, they are responsible for every penny that's collected, and the expenditure of every penny, not just out of the general fund, but they're responsible to the expenditure to any organization they give, how they spend, how that organization spends. So we give money to a senior center, and they misappropriate, we are fiscally responsible for that. We can't just say, oh, we gave it to them, it's not our business. Yes, it is our business. And people just don't grasp that concept. We give money to the sheriff, or one of the other constitutional officers, and that money's misspent, we are just as responsible to ensure that it's spent properly. And that, they just think, well, once we get the money from the county commission, you have no say in it. That's not true.
You know, the other, the other evaluator of when people say, we need more money, we need more money, and we need more funds, then you have to ask the question of, what is it that you're not able to do now that you'd be able to do if you got more funding? Because I think that has to validate your, your justification for additional funds. You should, not just for volunteer fire departments, but I'm talking about anyone that uses public funds. If you need public funds to provide services, then I think you have to be prepared to answer the question, what is it you're not providing now because of a lack of funds? And, and what is it you would provide if you had those funds? But, and I guess it needs to be perfectly clear, I think, and I think we're all in unison on this, is this commission is certainly willing to fund volunteer fire departments to the extent that we can. But it has to be with accountability, and it has to be based upon needs. That's the only way, I think, that we can expend public funds.
And that says it all?
That's it on the fire departments. DOH road repairs.
Okay, we have a map of highlighted the roads that are going to be done.
I'll just put it down there, and when you come down there.
Did they ever give us a list?
Yes.
Yes, they do have a list.
It's all in there.
No, I mean, a, a document that has each road listed.
Of what they're going to do?
Yeah.
Yes.
There's one that's missing.
Oh, my.
Before June 30, following roads will be done. Old Cheat Road, Northwestern Avenue, Crosby Road, Old Stewartstown Road, and Morgan's Run. Those are ones that are, will be done by June 30. Second half of the project from July through fall. Kingwood Pike, Dorsey Avenue, South Pierpont, College Avenue, Willie Street, Gladesville Road, Don Knotts Boulevard, Graffin Road, and High Street. I did see in the paper this morning that High Street's going to be started.
No mention of Route 7?
No.
Casfield, no mention Route 7 through Saberton?
That's just before June 30.
No, I thought she said July through fall.
The second portion I read is after.
There's no mention, well, there's no mention, we were just talking, which surprised me, is Green Bag Road.
It's not.
And, and Green Bag Road is a truck route, and.
That they don't use.
Right. I know, but everyone else does.
That came with this from the Department of Highway, Kathy West.
And that's one that I want to make sure that we can deal with.
We've, we've got some.
They were putting potholes, fill in the potholes, I'll say, on Route 73, I'm real pleased with that.
But.
Washington.
Paving, pavement repairs, yeah.
But, but you know, what we, what we said.
Mill and patch on 7, beginning 23.74.
Yeah, they're doing, they're doing mill and patching on Route 7.
Oh, are they? Oh.
26.01.
Paid, paid.
Yeah, and then 26.01, 36, oh, 26.01 to 36. So they're not going, they're not going past Route 5, they're just past Waynes Town. They're not going up, over the hill.
See, I think that's what we need, Alden. We need someone to reduce this to a document that says just what you're saying, Alden.
Yeah. Bill Austin is to help make an overlay for me, for us.
So we'll have sort of a narrative on what.
We'll have a narrative and an overlay. So with the commission's permission, I'll continue to work with Bill Austin to get an overlay, and he'll be able to come in and explain both the road count somewhere from the.
In the patching.
In the patching.
So, well, because what we said was, we need to have, we need to be able to answer two questions. One is, where can we piggyback if, if we can at all?
Yeah.
And two is, what roads are they not going to touch at all?
One is Green Bag Road, I think that's what I'm shocked.
Right. Green Bag Road's on, on.
857.
857 from 7, 262 to 1055, where's 857?
That's cheap. Yeah, well, that's all part of Green Bag. Yeah, that's way over. That's just, that's just from, basically from Pierpont across the Chubet Bridge.
Right.
They're not touching 857 back here.
I just talked to Bill Austin about this yesterday, and he didn't have time to have the, the map done for today, but we're going to.
Yeah, because we really need something you can pick up and say, okay, they're going to do this, this and this.
This is proposed, proposed paving project, but they're not funding it. From 857, from, not 857, what is that? That's the old Route 73. They're proposing on that.
But some of these roads, if they don't do anything by this fall, I hate to think what they're going to be, look like.
They're, there's a lot of roads they're not touching.
Yeah, I mean.
A lot of those. Where's Chaplain Hill?
1.4 million allocated in Mon County for this.
Yeah.
Northside.
Bertha Hill's here.
Bertha Hill.
Chaplain.
I want to talk about Ethics Commission's response to us, too.
1924, here it is. They're not touching Chaplain Road either. They're not touching River Road.
And they're not touching Saberton, right?
No.
I mean, that road's terrible. You got to go over to the left side of the road to get away from the pothole.
Well, my question is, now that we have this, I know, I'm just concerned that we need to get to like a couple of those, like you're talking about, some major, like Green Bag Road, Chaplain.
Some main travel road.
We need, those need to be our pri, yeah, those need to be our priorities. How can we get that started if we just still don't have a sign?
I'll look into it.
I know, you're working on that agreement, yeah.
I'm not worried about the signature. Your handshake's good enough for me. We'll get the money. That's not the problem.
We just need, yeah.
If this, they, they're not doing anything on 7, past that entrance to Brookhaven Road. And of course, Brookhaven Road's not included in there, Route 7 isn't, Summer School Road isn't included in there. There's a whole lot of areas they don't have.
They probably know I live on that road, that's probably why they don't.
Well, you know, that was totally unfair.
I don't even live on the Brookhaven Road. I travel the Brookhaven Road, but I don't live on it.
Well, see, that was totally unfair, and it was unfair for Parada Paying, too.
Yeah.
Because Parada Paying is on that road.
Yeah.
And they were doing us a favor by just going out and giving us an idea of what it would cost to pave the road. So instead of going out to Route 7, which we weren't paying for, they were doing it as, as free grass, they just went from their shop, and they went down to Route 7, and then everyone made a big deal, oh, even that beach, Senator Beach saying, oh, well, they shouldn't be doing that. Well, we're not doing that, you idiots. And I'll call you what you are, you're idiots.
I wanted, I wanted to just comment on, you know, we, we sent a request in to the Ethics Commission, and, and we got their response, and I don't know if you had a chance to look at their response.
Oh, yeah.
But I think their response avoided the question that we had.
Yes.
They said the question we had was, can we ask for contributions? Well, that wasn't our question. Our question was, can we send this letter out, this correspondence out, advising individuals or groups that this fund exists, and what it exists for? And if, if they would want to make a contribution, they send it to and give a name and an address. As far as I'm concerned, that's not asking for a contribution. That's making, making the people aware in the community, here's what the commission is doing, here's why they're doing it, here's how you can participate if you want to. I think we should resubmit it and say to the Ethics Commission, you didn't respond to our question. We sent you a draft copy of what we wanted to send out, and you didn't even address that.
I think when you read that response, it's prime example why government can't get anything done. Because the question was simple. Here's a letter. We know, we know what you said before, we can't solicit funds. We know that. But here's a letter that's just announcing the program. Is that letter acceptable? Yes or no? They ignored the letter and said, according to this and this, you can't solicit funds. We already know that.
Yeah.
We already got that response.
That wasn't the question.
That wasn't the question. It's just very frustrating, and the taxpayer has a right to get frustrated. You know, they're trying to get government to help them and make their lives better, and government just gets in the way.
You know, the, the problem with, with ethics is that there's no concrete source to determine the outcome. It's all someone's perception.
Subjective.
And value judgment, and it's very subjective. And that's why I think there, you have to have a need to be very specific with what the issue is. And, and I think we're all in agreement, that, our issue was not, can we go out and solicit contributions? Our issue was, here's the letter we want to send out.
Announcing this program.
And announcing this program, and tell us if it's, if it's not ethical, why it's not ethical.
Right.
We didn't get that response.
Well, then just, let's submit the letter with that one question.
Well, it was, but.
I know, let's, why don't we just resubmit it with the one, we understand.
Underline the one question?
Yeah, no, we can say, we, we agree with you, but the question we have is, we want to send this letter out as is.
I don't, I don't want to pick on the Ethics Commission, but I recall when we had a commissioners conference, and we had a representative from the Ethics Commission there that told all commissioners, if you sit on a, any group, if any issue comes up about funding, you have to disqualify yourself and leave the room.
Right.
And that was the guidance that was given. And this person was, was involved with the Ethics Commission. And then we found out, no, that's not right.
Right. When we, when we requested formal verification in where they're, what they were basing it on.
They backed off of it.
They backed off, because they didn't have anything to support it. They just.
Now that we have the list, how do we want to do like a, I mean, we're going to start the process of getting a priority list. How should we do that? What is your, I mean?
Well, what we should do, I mean, that's my, what we should do is, we should just brainstorm a list of our own, and then we can all sit down and prioritize. Other words, from the different sources to identify where the state is not going to address.
Do a lot of people call in, and we just make a list?
Well, the, they're, they're going to, they're going to call anyway, you don't need to invite them. What, what, what I, what my thoughts were, and I've already talked to Bill Austin, he says he can take this, and this layout, and do an overlay for us. On his count, he has, he has traffic maps of the entire county that has both the state counts, vehicle, daily vehicle count, plus our own daily vehicle count at the county level. So when he does this as an overlay, then we can take your idea of the brainstorming ourselves, which I think is a good idea.
Okay.
Say, well, is this road being included as you're driving along, and especially the staff, and everybody in this room, if you're driving.
If you're driving along and you see a, you should write, jot it down and bring it in. So that we can sort of kick that around and then compare it. Because then we're gonna have to select our priorities at some point.
The only two people I would like to ask and send us a letter would be Jeff Meadows from the school system and Dave Bruffy from the bus, because they're on there.
Yeah, I wanted to include them.
Just so we have a list, because then we can see. Because then we might all be in agreement.
And see the one who took her shoes, just like?
Yes, Jeff Meadows, yeah. And I think that would, that would at least give us.
I, I, I had a third one I wanted to include in that, and that was the EMS, Michael.
Oh, okay.
And the sheriff's department, the deputy sheriffs.
Yeah.
Should, should definitely have.
They would, they would, yeah.
Yeah, because I think if we're talking about safety and, you know, with the buses, you know, they're, because I heard.
They take care of the buses and EMS is out there all the time. They know, sheriffs are out there all the time, they know, plus the, the bus lines.
That sounds good, yeah. Then what, once we get that with the overlay, then we can come back in at a work session and.
Yeah, we, we're gonna have to have a.
Work session on this.
Probably a half-day work session, doing nothing but this, kicking this around.
Okay.
Okay, do you want then me to resubmit the letter to?
Yes, I, that's.
Yeah, we're just trying, let's try one more time.
I don't, I don't, I don't think, but I'll make a motion. I, I, I move that we resubmit the letter emphasizing, one, and I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go a little bit different than Tom. One, we know, and we knew, we knew that we are not allowed to solicit funds and we were familiar with these cases. One. Two, our letter is submitted, is being sent not as a solicitation, but as a notification of a fund and how it operates. Three, we're asking one question. Is this letter acceptable to be sent as a notification of this program? If not, please give us the authority by which you are citing that it does not meet, uh, meet the ethical requirements. I think just those, one, two, three, four.
Yeah.
Thank you, awaiting your reply.
Yep.
That's my motion.
Can't be said any better.
Second. Have a motion and a second on favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried.
It wasn't me.
That was just camera, I believe.
This is camera?
It beeped. Nothing?
Okay. All right, now you guys can do everyone.
Hey, long way to proclamation for letter carriers.
Yes.
Hey.
Hey, you need your, you need the reload tape?
No, I'm good.
So you're good?
Mm-hmm.
Just can't focus in on Diane.
Good. Guy, would you like to read this?
Yeah.
Oh, we kept you waiting here all day. Did you have fun?
Oh, yes. Gotti. Whereas every year on the second Saturday in May, the Letter Carriers Association across the county collect non-perishable food items as part of the nation's one-day food drive, distributing donations to local food banks and pantries. Whereas the Letter Carrier Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive is just one example of how letter carriers work to difference in the lives of those they serve. Since the pilot program drive was held in nineteen ninety-one, more than one billion pounds of food have been collected. And whereas, we would like to recognize letter carriers for their hard work and their commitment to their communities. All of the food collected in our community stays in our community and we support carriers' effort to help those in need of our community. Now therefore, we, Montague County Commission do proclaim Saturday, May tenth, twenty fourteen, as Letter Carrier's Food Drive Day in Montague County and encourage the citizens of our community to support the food drive by placing non-perishable food items in or near your mailbox on food drive day. Your letter carrier will pick it up while delivering mail together and we can help our, to free our hunger.
Move to approve the resolution as read.
Second.
And motion for approval in a second. On favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
She does a better job than you.
Thank you, thank you, Guy. Did you, did you identify yourself for?
Oh, Guy Panrel, retired letter carrier. Been involved with this for twenty-two years and seventeen as the coordinator. Been retired for two years and still, still involved. And this is a more, a really important time of the year for this because all the food pantries are dwindling down. They get their, their majority during the holidays. And now that summertime's coming, we're gonna have a lot of children that no longer will be in school that are at risk. And they're gonna have a need for this. And would appreciate any kind of help as far as advertisement, anybody. I mean, just, you know, need to get it out there. Appreciate Ben, if you can say something good for us in the paper and get it.
The letter carriers pick the food up?
Letter carriers and volunteers through the United Way. Most of the food bank that are, that are involved, they have volunteers. And we, as the letter carriers, bought T-shirts this year to identify everybody that was involved and what was going on, because we've had some phone calls saying, well, there's somebody on my porch took my food and, you know, I don't know whether it was, was your people or not. And as long as they have, you know, identification with them, usually the United Way people have their United Way placards, but.
Maybe I'll have a little thank you card. Just where the food is, you just put it down there. Thank you for your donation, letter carriers.
I got a letter from the letter carriers, so it went out.
Yeah, they, yeah, they, yeah, they went out this week. They're, usually we go out Wednesday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Yeah, I got it yesterday.
But we thank you very much for your participation.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for your work.
Okay, anything else, Diane?
I do have. On Saturday at the mall, we've been invited to participate in the mall marketplace. It's going to be Saturday, May tenth, from ten AM until four. There'll be a ten by ten foot space available. It would cost fifty dollars for us to participate. And if you'd like to do that, I can make the reservation. We are getting some pamphlets delivered from the County Commissioners Association. We'll have them, they're being mailed, we'll have them by Friday.
By Saturday?
Yeah.
Well, did, did she say what kind of brochures they were?
It's a trifold. We can make more copies, but she's spending five hundred.
Oh, okay.
So if she would have brought them today, had she been here.
Do we have to?
It describes the county commissioner's responsibilities.
I move that we get paid fifty dollars to get the booth.
And we can take our pull-up.
But can we, can we get a table and chairs?
Yeah, that's what we're.
Yeah, we'll have some chairs.
You know.
Just one, we take turns.
They supply the table and chairs?
They'll do the table, yeah.
Yeah, now this is to let people know about county government, right?
Yeah.
But you know, it might be nice if people think, if the others agree with me, is to, did we get pictures of the students?
Yes.
We only have till Saturday.
Till Saturday what?
That's when this happens.
Yeah.
Well, I know, well, it's, it's something simple. I was just saying, if we, if we had a pictures of the winners.
Okay.
And sitting up here and a copies of their, copies of their essays.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Eighth grade winners, they're on the table.
Yeah.
That people could read the, the, what the eighth graders think.
Okay. This is, we're turning the mall into a marketplace with a wide variety of vendors with different products and services. All local businesses and organizations are encouraged to participate.
Can we make copies of the insert that was put in the County Commissioners Association newsletter that shows all three of the commissioners and a little bit of a.
A little bio about that, yeah.
That we could actually hand those out?
Sure.
If someone would inquire, you know.
I'll do the first shift if you want me to.
I think we all ought to be there.
Okay.
I mean, it doesn't, that doesn't mean you can't take breaks for lunch and walk around, but.
When, when does it start?
Ten AM until four.
That's six hours.
You get a break for lunch.
Well, the NAR, Friends of NRAA is that night too, isn't it?
It's during the day.
It's during the day.
It's Thursday night. It's tomorrow night?
This is Saturday.
Saturday.
This is Saturday.
This is Saturday?
Yeah.
I gotta work on Saturday?
Ten AM to four.
Now, this is fun. Say work.
We'll give you Sunday off.
You give me Sunday off?
And you can even have Monday off.
And you can have Tuesday off, we're lashing.
Yeah.
We'll have to come back at night.
You'll enjoy it. Come on. You'll enjoy it.
Do you all work?
I mean, you, you. You can, I'll tell you what, you can even bring your grandson with you.
No, we're close.
That's a good idea. He'd have fun.
And they got a game room, don't they?
I don't know.
I think they have a game room.
Oh, he'd have fun.
There you are.
I don't wear, yeah, that's a good idea.
We'll even excuse you enough, go and take you there and.
Take, play there.
Yeah.
That'll be good.
So I'll get a check issued for fifty dollars if I can pay it. Well, I can actually probably give him a credit card.
And that's at ten o'clock?
Ten to four.
Where's it at?
At the mall.
More than town mall. Where do, do we know where? Do we know where in the mall?
No, they'll sign us a table.
By the bathroom.
Tell them we don't want to be down in some corner.
Yeah.
Near, near the game room.
It is.
That's at the far end.
You have to wait down.
Yeah. We want near the food court.
Well, the game room's near the food court, right?
No.
They have a, they have a.
It's down by Payless Shoe Store.
Play Gym too.
Yeah, they do, they have.
Play Gym, I'll carry metal for the younger kids.
Is that near the food court?
No.
Isn't it a mess?
Yeah, it's not that far down.
Down by J.C. Penney's.
How old is your grandson?
Can we do a plan of board education?
There's a lot more fun there.
Well, you can take him down there, I'll cover it for you.
No, I appreciate it.
Okay, so we are.
You would do it with your grandson too.
After the baseball.
And actually, we should, we should put something out to the other constitutional officers and say to them, we're gonna be up there if you want to stop in and introduce yourselves.
Like the assessors.
As they stop.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, the assessor has some literature, yeah, anything like that, we can just put some literature.
Yeah, and if they have any literature, they want handed out, we'll have a table, they'll put it on there.
Uh-huh. That's good.
Okay.
Okay.
Righty.
Oh.
Sorry, I interrupted.
I made a motion.
You made a motion, you seconded?
What was the motion?
To pay fifty dollars for the table.
And be there.
And be there.
Be there.
Or be square.
No, no, oh, you seconded? Was that, was that his part of the motion? That we had to be there? Gee, I guess I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, on favor, signify, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
He didn't, he didn't give me any chance to change the money.
You said the magic word, second. Okay, anything else?
No.
I have one thing on reports from county commissioners. I just want, they say there's two things you should never talk about, and one's religion, the other one's politics. Is that recently, the United States Supreme Court ruled five-four that we could say the Lord's Prayer at this meeting if we wanted to. The only thing is, there's two conditions. We can't, we can't chastise someone because they're not Christian and we can't ridicule or convert, coerce someone to participate that doesn't want to participate. But I'm just throwing this out to think about it, rather than to have just silent meditation. I'm not too sure it's a bad idea to put the Lord in actively involved in this meeting.
What is, what are you saying that want to be clear?
I'm saying that I think we should consider saying the Lord's Prayer in place of the silent meditation. We are Christian, you know, our buildings, our money, everything says under God, one nation under God. I mean, we're not gonna talk about what you want to call God. I mean, God's God and regardless of what religion you got, you've got a God. You may call him by different names, but he's still God. I, I just think it, it gives more of a meaning to recognizing the meaning of God in, in, in our, in our country, in our nation.
I would have to say I'd be very cautious of how we do this. I like the moment of silence because I believe everyone can choose their own way of dealing with the issue. I, I just get concerned if we're gonna start saying prayer that who decides? And then we start getting individuals and saying that it's considered one-sided or not-sided. That's why I like the moment of silence and I'm very comfortable with that.
Okay. Eldon?
I like having a prayer. I, I think the Lord's Prayer is problematic because it's clearly Christian prayer, solid Christian prayer. I would be more comfortable with, if we were going to have a vocalized prayer, to invite different religions to come and open the session with prayer. From any, any group or any religion. That's, the, the, the moment of silent meditation is non-offensive to anyone. I would think it would be non-offensive to anyone. The fact that I pray during that moment of silent meditation, you know, that shouldn't be held against me, but maybe some people would hold it against me. So, I, 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 my personal feeling is, I think it would be great if we could start, start every activity with a prayer. I start my day with a prayer. I thank God for waking up every morning. Because the alternative's not very good. But I just, I, I think it's something we need to kick around a little bit more.
Yeah, I'm not saying that we need to vote on it today. And the only reason I bring it up is I can appreciate, you know, the issues that you're talking about because those issues did exist. However, with the five-four decision of the United States Supreme Court, it lays some of those issues to rest. And it recognizes that we live in a country, we are one nation under God. As long as we don't discriminate against other types and forms of religion, then, then if we wanted to do this, but I, I throw it out to think about it.
It, it, it's a, it's, I, I haven't read the decision and I'd like to read the decision. But the epsearch that I did read, that they, the finding was that it was a historical ceremonial act and not a religious act that, that they were doing by having these prayers. I would like, I, I would like to, to read some more. And I, I don't know, quite frankly, I don't know which way I fall right now. If, if I was the only one up here and I thought, I thought the devil was getting up there.
No, I have a stick in here.
Well, I, I better watch the devil. I'll start with it.
Okay, I, that's.
My only concern.
That's all I had.
No, my only.
Just think about it.
Yeah, and that's fine. My only concern is that I think the three of us are working well and I would hate something which is very, I don't want to say minor, which is very important to each of us, cause a problem where individuals come in and start skewing one side over another. And that's what just concerns me.
Well, look what they've, look what they did with Brookhaven Road.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's what worries me.
I'll stand on the Brookhaven Road with God anytime.
But I mean, they twisted it, they twisted it and turned it because they wanted to create a controversy and attack, and attack Bill. I mean, that's what it was all about.
Yeah.
And when, when, and they knew it was false when they were saying it. They knew it was not true when they were saying it. So I agree with you. So I agree with you. I mean, you try to do something good, someone is gonna twist it and turn it into something really bad. But I am in favor of furthering exploring this.
Sure, okay, that's fine.
Okay.
I accept that.
Uh, I'll go.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just had, I just had one, one thing. Having come from a mountains being away without, without cell phone or TV or phones.
Now, you can't, you can't resign. We're not accepting that.
The, and I, I read an interesting editorial about Snake Hill, Snake Hill Wildlife Management.
Area.
Area, thank you. Snake Hill Wildlife Management Area. And I couldn't help but shake my head. This is the, what they're talking about there, and I have to agree with the, the newspaper, the editorial board on this one, totally. Only I'd have been a little bit stronger than they were. What they are saying is that this is a wildlife area, controlled wildlife area. But in order to walk on it, in order to enjoy the beauty and the splendor of the area, you must either be carrying a fishing pole or a gun. That's what DNR said based on, based on the editorial, and I'm taking the editorial as being factual. That is ridiculous. This is the same kind of thing that we ran into with all of our parks. A little group controlled it forever, had it, it was theirs. They made the rules as they chose. If they didn't like you, you weren't invited in. If they liked you, you were invited, you, you could come in and do whatever you wanted to, oftentimes for free. Now our state seems to be doing the same thing with this wildlife management area. And you got, I'm a sportsman. I started hunting when I was, I haven't hunted in a number of years, but I started hunting when I was 10 years old with my dad and fishing when I was five. And I'm gonna start my grandson when he's three, fishing. These areas belong to all the people. I just could not, it just struck me after, after spending a, a beautiful time in the mountains, enjoying the spun, spunder of smoke hole and just be, I walked, I walked over the mountains. I didn't, wasn't carrying a gun. And to say, well, you're not allowed to do that because that's what it's for, just people that are hunting or fishing? That's not right. If someone wants to go out for nothing more than to look at the leaves, that is state property, it belongs to all the people and anything that prevents that from happening is just wrong. So I, I add, Ben, you can pass this on. I add, add my commendation to the, the editorial board, they're absolutely right. But as I said, I'd have been a little bit stronger, like I was just now. This is property of the people and all the people, whether they're carrying a gun or a fishing pole or a camera or just taking their grandson or granddaughter around, they should be allowed to enjoy the splendor of that area. Thank you, that's all I have.
Is there gonna be a public portion?
Yes.
Can I say amen?
Yes, you can say amen.
And before we go to the public portion, I just want to end on a positive, real positive note. First, I, I wanna say thank you, one, the West TV, because you probably gave three moms the best Mother's Day gift by filming this, cause they were, if you would've seen their faces, they were just ecstatic. And I know when I told them that they're gonna be able to see it forever on tape, they're thrilled about that.
I'll say hoorah, hoorah to them.
Yeah. Second, I do wanna thank Diane. Diane, I really appreciate that. Uh, as I jokingly was gonna say, Diane and the rest of you all now understand what it's like when a teacher wants to get the program right and you have three kids and you wanted everything in order and it went great. And I really think we set a, I, I think we really set a nice precedent today and that, you know, even the Board of Education was thrilled, you know, what we did. And, and hopefully maybe this will be the stepping stone for better relationships. But Diane, I wanna thank you and hope now you don't have to have nightmares. But now you know what a teacher feels like the night before a big program and so you're just so worried, is everything gonna go right? So I, and again, I wanna thank everyone. I really, I was real excited. I, I really enjoyed it. I, I was as excited as the kids were that we did this, so that's all, and.
That's it, group?
That's it, positive.
Did Diane have anything?
No, I think it went well.
We, we, yeah, elected officials, we have no elected officials in here. Okay, comments, comments.
Public portion?
Went well, it was, it was nice and glad it turned out as well as it did.
Yeah, and now we know what to do next.
And the three, none of us embarrassed you, right?
No, not even you.
Thanks for that. Any other comments about anything else?
No.
Okay, Bobby?
Yes.
Renee? Jan?
Yes.
Ben? Jan? Jeff? Any comments from the public?
Public.
Yes.
Guy Panrell, South Hills Drive. I'm a lifelong resident here in the state and town and county. Spoke to the same issue that you brought up last night. That is a wildlife management area. It's not a state park. It's a wildlife management area and the animals are the reason the management area is there. That's the reason I spoke to it. Whatever is done out there shouldn't have an impact on the animals.
No, I agree with that.
Yeah, I mean, but, but, you know, I mean, we, sometimes there are unintended consequences that go along with things. That's just like with, with the smoking ban that they have here in town. I mean, I think it's good. I can get my wife into any restaurant or place that I go that they don't smoke. But you look at the streets and you see the cigarette butts all over the place, so that's an unintended consequence. Same thing when the city passed the anti-fracking bill out here. The company that, that they went against took away, I think, 30 or $50,000 from the farmer's market. So that was an unintended consequence. And, and I just think people need to be mindful with, with, when we do this, we are taking the habitat away from the animals. I mean, that's just all it is. And, and, well, in the city, probably three years ago, it, it took me two years going to city council to get an urban deer hunt started in town to try to curtail the damage that was done. This state has the highest insurance rates in the nation because of the deer issue and the deer problem in this state. But like I said, I, like I said, I spoke about this last night and I think we need to be mindful about the pressures brought on these animals during hunting season out there. And then you put pressure on them again the rest of the year by somebody that's going out and going through. I mean, I, if, if you wanna hike, Cooper's Rock has some beautiful trails. I mean, and it's not that far away. But, you know, just personal opinion and I just wanted to bring it up because like I said, I, I'm from around here and I think we're just building way too many buildings inside and outside the city. It would hurt my feelings if there was not another building built. We keep complaining about the traffic problems that we have. We're limited with what we can do, but yet we still make the problems worse by what we're doing, you know? Money, I mean, that's just the bottom line, but thank you.
But you don't have, you don't have a problem during hunting season for people to walk around without a gun?
No, I mean, but I wouldn't wanna be out there. No, I mean, I think, I think anybody should be allowed to use.
I just, I just thought that, 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 that you had to be hunting or fishing to.
Well, I, you know, I'm not sure how that works. I just know, I know the, the DNR is in charge out there. It's, it's, that area is for wildlife management. You know, it doesn't say anything at all about, you know, hiking or, or four-wheeling or, or whatever.
Well, yeah. There, there's always more to the story. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, nothing else? I have a motion to adjourn.
Go, go.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, on favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We have returned.